Good morning, everybody. I call the December eighth, two thousand and fifteen, Slayne County Commission Public Forum and Meeting to order. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Guile.
Here.
Commissioner Price. Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
I ask you all to stand and join with me in a flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move now on to a public forum where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time?
Karen Shade, one-one-one, Wisconsin. I just wanted to follow up on something from last week. Commissioner Price wasn't here physically, but he was present on the phone, and it was a little hard to hear, and perhaps he might have shared some of his concerns in the discussion if we had physically seen him, and he just saved his comments toward the end. I'm referring to the tobacco, the Baby and Me Tobacco Free Grant. I didn't understand his comments. People begin smoking for a variety of reasons. It's hard to quit. One of the things that people, pregnant women, will sometimes do when they find out they're carrying a child is choose to quit for the baby and for a variety of other factors, and this grant plays upon that. If a woman were thinking about terminating her pregnancy, I don't understand why she might choose to participate in a smoking cessation program, and I have no idea how the rewards of getting diaper vouchers would be helpful to her if there is no baby. So, the article I put in front of Commissioner Price deals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. It identifies five million people in this country have them. The grant was intended to help prevent prematurity and low birth weight, and to me, if we can prevent these problems at a very reasonable cost, I'm for those things, and I didn't understand what Commissioner Price's objections were.
Please.
And it was hard to explain over the phone when I can't look at somebody face-to-face. But my objections are, first of all, you know my stand on abortion. I'm against abortion, and I've always been that way, and so we're not going to get into that, but you know my stand on that. Second of all, you know my stand, remember about FEMA when I said I'm not going to vote to accept this money to fix people's, because it's not free money, it's taxpayers' money. These diapers aren't, nobody's giving these diapers to them free. Taxpayers are paying for it. We give them, we give free phones, we give phones, we, why don't I get a new car? Somebody should give me a new car free, the government. We want, everybody wants free, free, free. As an audience, there's people out there that want to say, quit giving away this money that's not free, it's taxpayers'. I see, I see some heads out there right now, a bunch of them. So Karen, why don't you just go get a job and get the $5,000 and give it to them, and donate the money yourself, you're so for it. I don't want to spend the taxpayers' money, and you'll come back and say, well, this will happen, this will happen, we're going to spend it later down the road. Where do you draw the line? You know, it's just, we've got to, we've got to stop spending.
Well, I appreciate your clarification.
What is it, forty trillion dollars in debt or forty-nine trillion? We've got to stop this spending, and somebody just has to say, no. Somebody's got to say no, and I'm going to start saying no. I remember Randy Duncan was here, and I didn't agree with him. They were going to have safety belt checks, and they were going to give two, twenty-five-hundred or five-thousand dollars to the Sheriff Department to do overtime for safety belt checks. Well, I voted for it, but now I'm thinking, we're paying them to do that job anyway. Pull them over if they don't have their belt on, give them a ticket. But let's not just keep having the state give us free money, free, 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 and that's where I stand, and I'm going to make that stand, and I think our government, our government people need to, you know, we made a stand today that we're not going to, we're going to fix our old building. So we have to make some stands and say, we don't have the money, we can't be, and you say it's free, but it's not free. Those aren't free diapers, they, somebody's paying for them.
Well, thank you for the explanation, I appreciate that.
I appreciate the clarification as well, thank you.
Judy Larson, twenty-eight oh one, Ray Avenue. It's my understanding that FEMA is not a government organization, it is an insurance company, and as an insurance company, they have to appeal to Congress for funding, so they are not, not an independent usurper of our tax dollars. Secondly, the March of Dimes has been fighting against birth defects for over sixty years, and a review of their website says, and I quote, "As policy, abortion is not the answer to any birth defect problem," unquote. I think that opinions expressed that are based more on someone's own opinion than actual facts is a disservice to the constituents. I believe that we are trying, I'm not sure that the March of Dimes is an organization that collects tax money from taxpayers. I think that's wrong. I think that's incorrect, and contributions that are made to the March of Dimes are made to the March of Dimes. So anything that tries to connect the March of Dimes and the Baby and Me Smoke Cessation Program with abortion is totally wrong and not based on fact.
Thank you.
I guess I'll have to explain myself again, brother.
Well, I'm okay. I mean, that's just a public forum, that's just her viewpoint, so...
I'm just going to explain my, because I wasn't here yes, last week to explain it. A little research that I've, and I've got an article, that March of Dimes supports Planned Parenthood. Pepsi supports Planned Parenthood. Taco Bell supports Planned Parenthood. There's numerous of them, I'm not going to sit here and name them all. This is just what I read on, in the paper and online. I read this in a newspaper, when they had all that trouble with Planned Parenthood and the selling parts. I want nothing to do with Planned Parenthood. Therefore, I'm not going to support the March of Dimes. I don't go to Taco Bell anymore. I don't, I started drinking Coke. I don't drink Pepsi anymore. That's my choice, and I don't tell anybody else to do that, but I don't want to support that.
If you read...
And then the others vote, the others voted for it, so the four votes came, but that's my personal choice. I will not sign, I, when a president is running, if he's for abortions, I'm not going to vote for him. I don't, I'm not going to vote for that guy. So that's my personal choice.
And your personal choice is not entirely based on fact, because if you check the March of Dimes website, you would see that they are not connected with Planned Parenthood or abortion. It's on the March of Dimes website. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy.
And you could, you could bring me a copy of that, Judy, and show it to me.
I will.
Northern Mano, Salina, Kansas. If we're going to rein in spending, we need to make it clear to the department heads, they don't need to be buying equipment for pleasure. It was just mentioned upstairs, the Sheriff Department's going to put a treadmill on the website. What do they need a treadmill for?
They were getting rid of a treadmill, but I, your point's still, your point's still taken.
They don't need one. If they've got time to get on the treadmill, they're not busy.
Okay.
Well, they have a gym over there, and I've visited it, and the sheriff said, since I work for the county, I'd be welcome to come over and exercise, and it, and the police have a very nice exercise room, and, and they need to be fit and in shape, and I have no problem with them, rather than us paying for them to be a YMCA or something that they have their gym. Yeah, I'd like to have us a gym.
Yeah, they go in on their, they go in on their off-time. They're not there during business hours, when they're, when they're working, on duty.
That goes back to the taxpayer paid for the machine.
Well, they actually were all donated to them. They were, I asked him, they were all donated.
Thank you for...
And we need physical fit officers, there's nothing wrong with that.
Anyone else would like to come forward at this time?
Ray Ruska, two-thirty-five North Santa Fe. I would like an explanation of what occurred last week about the parliamentary procedure meeting that Mike Montoya put on, and I was assured by the chairman, Mr. Shadwick, that that would be taken care of, and it, there's a whole set of circumstances that occurred there that didn't come out the way it was supposed to. I would just like you to give the public an explanation for that, Monty.
I don't feel like I have to. I didn't say I would take care of it in the way that you wanted it taken care of. I said I would follow up on it. We moved it to a larger room. It wasn't broadcast, done deal.
Okay.
Public was available to come.
Okay. What you just said contradicts what you said in the meeting, if you want to go back and look at it. And I could point that out if you'd like, but...
We don't need to take county business time to do that, if you'd like to do it on...
What do you mean, county business time? It's what we're talking about right now, county business.
You can, you can talk to me later about it.
Well, it's county business, Monty. Can't you talk about it now?
I gave you my explanation. It's not good enough for you, and so sorry.
Well, I didn't say it wasn't good enough for me. I'm asking for your opinion of it, and you do give it when you make it convenient for, when it's your, you're promoting your position. Say it. Don't avoid it, just say it.
I think I did. Anybody else would like to come forward at this time?
Tom Rixtrew, forty-five hundred West Schilling. I have to support Mr. Price on his deal of, all of us have to rein back. We are all spending too much money. Our country's in debt, and wherever we could cut a corner, there's way too many handouts. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, that there's jobs, but nobody, they'd rather stand with their handout, and I don't know where to start, and I think any place he starts, that's a start, and I'm glad that he took a stand, whether it's right, wrong, or different, where they can back it up through the website. Because the websites are always right, we always got to remember that. No matter what's on the website, it's correct, and so I appreciate that as a taxpayer, as a property owner, that our taxes are entirely too high, going for things that aren't really, and we can talk about the county. We spend a lot of money on the criminal justice and the Health Department, and our roads and our bridges are falling apart. We can't move a truck down the road. We can't, farmers can't get the grain to market because they got to drive three or four, five miles out of the way because the bridge is out of the way. So somewhere we got to start whacking, and I appreciate y'all's concern about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, welcome back. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to, back to regular business, item number one.
It's Resolution fifteen dash twenty-one eighty-one, the cancellation of tax warrants. Have staff report by Rita Deister, our county administrator.
Rita?
Warrants in this definition here means checks, just canceled checks, and basically this is a housekeeping duty. The state law allows us every, at the end of two years, we can do a resolution and cancel any outstanding checks. We, we have, with the change of treasures over the years, we've kind of forgot to do this bit of housekeeping, and so we have some checks here that goes back several years, but we will start making this an annual process now, and just get the ones that are two years in arrears updated, and as we mentioned last week in, in our study session, I'm pretty certain that all these vendors have been paid. We probably just had a check misplaced, and then they sent us an invoice, and we paid later, so it's just pretty much routine business to get these checks canceled.
One thing, please, one thing that I'd like to ask is, if all of these checks are still on the books, and was there another check he issued on any of them, and probably...
I'm sure there was.
So these are still all on the books, so actually, taking them off will still put us, whatever that figure is...
We haven't, we haven't found any money, because this is part of the bank reconciliation, so it'd just make their, the treasurer's job simpler when they go to do the bank reconciliation.
I agree.
Yeah.
Did any of these people call and...
Not to my knowledge.
...want their check cashed, or still had their check, or, okay.
Further questions? Public comment?
Ray Ruska, two-thirty-five North Santa Fe. I have a quick question here for Rita, and she mentioned that the statute on this is two years, and some of these are way past that, and now, my question is, what is the reason it started the yearly process on these warrants? I mean, why did it all of a sudden just, today we've changed our policy from two years, which was supposed to be, according to statute, we just move it down to every year? What caused this?
Well, I think that there was a change in treasures. This is actually done in the treasurer's office. We have a checks and balance that is a good auditing practice. The administrative office writes the checks, and the treasurer's office reconciles them, and so apparently, up through the time that Keith Lilly was treasurer, this was routine business, and then when Brenda came in, for some reason, it was dropped, and so it came to the attention of the current treasurer that this is a practice that we should be doing, and so when he came across the hall and mentioned it to us, we got busy and got the resolution together. So it's just one of those things with changing of personnel or elected officials over the years that got dropped, so...
So the answer to your question is, the treasurer is the one that brought it to the attention of the county commission, and they are the ones that requested to start doing this on a yearly basis?
The treasurer brought it to my attention, and at that point, I went down and reviewed what had been done in the past and found that we had routinely done it every year, and it checked the law, and the statutory law says that you should be doing this, and so that's how, and then I took it to the commissioners.
Did you just say you just reto, they had just reto, routinely done this every year in the past?
Well, there would always be more than likely two years in arrears checks if you, if the, if the policy is any checks that are two years old, every year there'd be some new checks that could possibly be two years old, and then you would routine, it's just, like here, in a couple of weeks, we're going to do some yearly bookkeeping or housekeeping again. It's just one of those things you would normally routinely do.
So the checks from like 2014 will appear, and, and that speaks well that Jim DeBois was on top of it, and he was doing his job, so now he's going to move forward from this, on this.
Well, I'm just assuming the answer is, the treasurer, DeBois, is the one that decided to, you know, start continuing this practice?
Correct.
Okay, that's the, that's the answer to the question. Thank you.
Reliable staff.
Further comments? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the cancellation of certain tax warrants as listed in Resolution fifteen twenty-one eighty-one as recommended by staff, and I want to give thanks to Jim for bringing that through.
I'll second that.
Is the motion a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Passes five-zero. Item number two?
Resolution fifteen twenty-one eighty-two, the 2016 distribution of alcohol funds, and again with Rita Deister, our county administrator.
Rita?
We receive alcohol funds that comes down to us from the state, and the law requires us to distribute those funds, a third to the General Courthouse Fund, a third to the Spatial Alcohol Fund, and a third to the Spatial Parks and Recreation Fund, and the commissioners over the year, years have chosen to do grants for community organizations for the, these alcohol monies, and this is our beginning, our grants go in two-year cycles, and this is the beginning of a new grant cycle, and this year, we are anticipating for 2016 that we'll have a Spatial Parks and Recreation Fund budget of twenty-six-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighteen, and this compares to eighteen-thousand, four-hundred-and-eight dollars that we had in that fund for 2015. This, the Spatial Alcohol Fund, we're projecting a budget of twenty-three-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars for 2016 as compared to the eighteen-thousand, four-hundred-and-eight that we budgeted last year. All the organizations that are currently receiving funding has applied for a new grant, with the exception of the Girl Scouts, and we did not receive a grant from them. We had people apply for a larger amount than we had money for, so I just presented it out, so everybody got the same amount of cut from what their request was, so it was fair to everyone. We're proposing that for Darren Gray, that they get three-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars, Central Kansas Foundation, eight-thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-three, Kansas Wesleyan University, two-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-three, Friends of Recovery is three-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars, twenty judicial, judicial district community correction, two-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-three, Esby House, three-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-six, and that would be under the Spatial Alcohol and Drug Money, and then under Spatial Alcohol Recreation Fund, Slayne County Association of Retarded Citizens, two-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars, Slayne County Four-H Youth, nine-thousand, forty-six dollars, Assyria Summer Youth Program, six-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-four, Reps and Sets, two-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-two, and City of Mullen, one-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven, and the City of Jepsons, four-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-four, and all of these folks that have previously received grants have submitted their reports to show that they used their money as they had requested, so...
Do you oversee that, or who actually reviews the grant application?
I review them.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith brought up a good point this morning about some agencies getting more than others, and you explained it pretty well, that a third goes into recreation, and a third goes into prevention. I forgot the other third.
The other third comes back to General Courthouse or General Fund.
Okay, General Fund. So if there's only one person that applied for this thing, and there were six that applied for that, that maybe is the discrepancy, and I think that, and wasn't that your question today?
Well, it's hard, but the total, it's kind of complicated, but the total figure is not a third and a third. There's a two-thousand-dollar difference.
There, there's a little bit of money that is taken out of that third to the, the small third-class cities, and it's such a minute amount, it throws off the balance, but it's still basically a third and a third.
Further questions?
And the requirement that a third go to the parks and a third go to prevention is state mandated, so we don't have a choice about that.
Yeah.
I would like to see that changed, but that's impossible.
Legislatures could do that.
They do it.
Yeah, and then legislatures could make it available, that anybody that receives this money from the county, that their meetings would be open, if they're receiving money, open records, open act should be available to those companies too, I feel, and legislature might make that decision in the future.
Further questions of staff? Public comment?
Ray Ruska, two-thirty-five North Santa Fe. My question is, well, this alcohol money, you know, is, it wasn't totaled up in the resolution, and I was kind of curious what the total amount was, that's one question, and then the alcohol money, where's it come from?
It comes from the drinking establishments that are in the county, and then that...
Rural areas.
Yeah, the rural areas.
That's in the first, first line of the RFA, the very first line, it says ten percent of grocery receipts taxed on the sale of alcoholic liquor in clubs, and that's only in unincorporated Slayne County.
Well, thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Mayorman. I was reading the resolution, I didn't see that on it. The, now that we know where the alcohol money comes from, how does it become a grant, you know, to give to all these different organizations? I mean, is that like another one of those free money deals?
It's actually not free, because they're taking, they're collecting the money from the people that are spending alcohol.
Correct.
From buying alcohol.
You're not, if you don't buy alcohol, you, in the county, you haven't given any money.
You're not helping.
You're not, if you're not buying alcohol in the county, you're not giving any money. But if you go, if you go to the strip bar and buy beer, you're going to...
Now, wait, wait a minute. This is not about me personally, but whatever I do in my own time is mine.
I don't care, I'm just saying, not everybody's...
Let's move on. Your question, sir, I'm sorry. Your question?
I'm just, the, the question was about, how's it connected to the grants? I mean, where we're getting money?
I can tell you that, just because I'm involved in this. I send my ten percent into the Alcoholic Beverage Control, Kansas Department of Revenue every month, by the twenty-fifth. They take a portion of that, and they bring it back to the counties.
You know, it would kind of be nice to know...
To the city or the county, because the city, the city does the same thing, it's just...
That we don't get a portion of it.
Right.
Yeah.
And you're saying it's in the, in the county, as far as the townships, or...
This, this amount, this resolution is, is everybody in the rural areas, outside the city limits. The city gets the same amount of funds, and they distribute it how they want to. Theirs is obviously a larger pot.
When the winery was open, we received a lot more money a few years ago. Now, they've closed, so we're not receiving that. We have a few little stores and a...
Racetrack, stuff like that.
But I don't send my money directly to the county, or the city, or to whomever. It goes to the Kansas Department of Revenue.
And then, and then I don't know if you've ever seen a grant application. You have to show, I, like I said, I haven't seen, I don't know if all of these are different, or if there's just one template for all of them, but you have to show your expenditures, what you're going to use the money for, what you've done in the past, how you're marketing it, how you're, you know, benefiting from it, and that's the application that I just asked Rita, if she, there's a committee that reviews those, does she review the applications? I mean, you can't just call her and say, I want seven-thousand dollars. It's a process, and some of, some grant applications are very, very difficult, and thirty pages long, and some are not. I take it this might be...
They have to justify that they meet the intent...
Correct.
...of what the dollars are supposed to be spent for, whether it's for prevention or education on alcohol...
Correct.
...or for recreation, for youth, and so there is criteria that they have to meet before they qualify.
Right.
Because there were some parts of that was like for transportation to, like Assyria, they transported them to Linsburg and stuff, and there was all kinds of, fixed youth programs.
Well, since we know the, how much is being collected?
Ten percent.
Right. Where's the list of the businesses in Slayne County that are the contributors that are putting, so we know there's a check and a balance here to figure out whether or not it's correct or not?
Well, that was in the discussion last week upstairs, and I believe we talked about the club on the west side of Salina. We, we could not count the Renaissance, Renaissance Club, because it is in the city of Assyria, so that one came up, and I think there was the racetrack, was the other one.
Gas station in Headville.
Headville.
Headville Gas Station.
And I thought someone said that there was a...
C and W Ranch.
C and W Ranch, could remember the other one.
That's it, right. It's a short, very, very short list.
Very short list.
Well, I do recall what that discussion, you know, vaguely, but I still would like to see where the money is coming from and where it's going, and we know where it's going, because we've, we've run that one, you know, explained that one right down to the last detail.
Well, it'll be in the minutes, now that we've just listed the businesses as well.
There was only three businesses making contribution, contribution to this ten percent?
Correct.
And there's that much money we're talking about?
Lot of booze, man. Lot of booze, man.
Is that true, Mr. Chairman?
I don't know, I pay quite a bit. It's public knowledge.
Well, no one mentioned your name, or second to go.
But if you're asking who checks on that, trust me, the Department of Revenue and the Alcoholic Beverage, Beverage Control is very much on top of us.
They have a license if you don't pay.
The question still hasn't been answered, who are they? Who are the contributors?
They just said it.
How many?
They just said four.
A total of four?
Yeah. In the county, in the county. The gentleman's club on west of town, C and W Ranch, the racetrack, and what am I missing?
The convenience store out on Headville.
Headville, Headville and I-7.
And they just, they just reopened.
They just started back up again, so they haven't been open very long. So that's a very short list.
Well, this has been a very interesting conversation, because I wasn't aware of a lot of these facts. And since we're only talking about four contributors, sound like they're being made an example of, to me.
And we made, when we first came on, Jim and I, we looked at some of these that we contribute to, and we thought, well, maybe this place could use a little more money in this place, and we do move it around.
You do move it around.
You know, if we see, if we look at that, and if we see that, that grant, it's a grant, but we still make a decision who we pay it to.
Right.
You know, and...
Thank you for your questions.
At the expense of, of a local business, because they sell alcohol.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sales tax, too, on some people.
Further public comment?
I didn't hear that last comment.
Well, you pay sales tax, everything you buy, most generally, and that tax goes to the state, and it's taxed, it's just another type of tax.
Pretty much everybody pays sales tax, though. We're only talking about four people here, four businesses.
If you buy alcohol, you're going to pay the tax somewhere, isn't that right?
No, everybody in the city pays this, too.
Okay, so the county is just only four, but the city is quite a...
This, this amount that they're giving out is in the seven figures for the city, probably.
Quite an eye-opener, huh?
There's a whole lot of drinking going on.
Thank goodness.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Question for Rita, the total here is about $75,000.
It's $26,618 plus $23,578.
But those are the two one-thirds, and there's another third, so the total package is about $75,000. So $750,000 worth of sales in the county.
Yeah. It's what we're estimating, you know, it fluctuates for mere year, whether we're on target or not.
Like that one convenience store was closed for quite a little while out on Headville Road. It's just, within the last few months reopened, so.
All right, let's move on, is there a motion? Mr. Chairman? Hold on, do you have another public comment?
I was going to thank Dave Smith, Chair, the Commissioner, for that number. And 10% of $75,000, that means that people are spending seven and a half...
No, $750,000. 10% of that...
Yeah.
Is the tax coming back.
That's pretty simple.
Yeah.
So it's a seven, people are drinking seven and a half million dollars worth of...
$750,000.
$750,000.
Just in the county.
Outside the city limits, Sling County.
Let's, let's move on. Thank you, thank you for the figures, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 15-2182, the 2016 distribution of alcoholic, or alcohol funds for Special Alcohol and Drug Fund and Special Parks and Recreation, as recommended by staff.
Second. Second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. It passes 5-0. Item number three.
Emergency Management Update with Hannah Stanball, the Director of Emergency Management.
Morning again.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is the, our bimonthly update for the Emergency Management Department. I've got a few pictures, of course, to...
We like pictures.
Everybody loves pictures. If I'm out there, I might as well just take a picture of it, it tells the story a little bit better. We'll first go over some of the different weather events that we had for October and November. October was a fairly mild month, no severe weather events there, but we did have quite a few days where we didn't receive a whole lot of precipitation the month of October, which created some pretty dangerous fire conditions that we had. November was definitely an interesting month, began the month, not only in the state of Kansas with severe weather, but then also tornadoes out in western Kansas, and then finished up with a nice little ice storm over the Thanksgiving holiday. So, one of our biggest days that we had was on November the 16th. We did have threats of severe weather that was followed basically by the, all the severe storms out in western Kansas that tornadoes came about. By the time it reached us, it had dropped below severe weather limits, so we just received a lot of nice, good, needed rain. The most current one that we've had was the Thanksgiving ice storm, obviously, this is something that was, this was warned to us quite a bit in advance, so people had the opportunity to rearrange travel plans if necessary. We lucked out fairly well. Kind of our area, we did receive ice, and some precipitation did create some hazardous weather conditions for driving in our area. Most of the problems that we had were pretty much out in eastern Kansas. But we also did get some nice rain out of it, too, about two inches of rain is what we saw. So, to look at the average precipitation that we had for the month of October, here's a nice little picture, shows you who got the bulk of the moisture, obviously, out in western Kansas, they did a pretty darn good job. We only had anywhere from about an inch is basically kind of where we, where we landed, which is quite a bit below normal precipitation from the month of October. We did make it up for the month of November. This kind of shows you a 72-hour precept total during the Thanksgiving ice storm, so it shows that we had just about two inches. You can see the heavier amounts are out in the eastern, southeastern Kansas portion of it. For November, our average precipitation totals was about 2.18 inches, which is about an inch above normal limits. And just some nice little pictures, these are in front of my house, so had some nice little pictures of some great ice accumulations. This kind of shows that November of 2015, just a little climate summary from the National Weather Service, just interesting facts and information that came out from them, showing that it was the 13th wettest November since 1949, and definitely the wettest since 19, or from 2011. This is our drought monitor categories, because of the lack of precipitation that we had in, in October, that kind of set us back just a little bit, back into the abnormally dry category. And this was as of November the 24th. They're still showing predictions for a strong El Nino event, and basically what that means is more precipitation for the central US. So if you look at the pictures that are, that are displayed up here on the left-hand side, that shows temperature probability for a three-month period, so December, January, and February. We're kind of in that little white area, which means we have equal chances of having either above normal or below normal temperatures for that three-month time period. If you look at the picture on the right, that shows precipitation. Now, it doesn't say what form of precipitation, so it could be ice, it could be snow, it could be rain. But it does show that we are definitely in the nice darker colors of the green, showing above-normal chances for larger amounts of precipitation that, that same three-month period. So, I think we welcome the precipitation, most definitely. It'll be interesting to see what kind of happens here over the next, next couple months, to see if it holds true. For some of our emergency management activities, probably one of the biggest, we had quite a few different prevention or education events that we had in the months of October and November. This is one that we partnered with the Salina Fire Department, as well as the Health Department, and provided a preparedness event for some of our, our associates with Choices and Angels and OCCK, for them to come out and kind of learn a little bit more about preparedness, and give them some ideas as far as what they can do at home, and how they can work with their clients, as well as also work with their caregivers, to be able to be prepared and communicate with their families. We brought out Ashes, the arson investigation dog, and of course, she's always the highlight of the show, they absolutely love looking at her. They love seeing what she can do. And then, we just showed them just different ideas as far as go-kits and things that they can prepare for at home. And then let them leave with some little trinkets and some information on how to build emergency plans for themselves and their families. The other big event was the Kansas Association of Counties Conference, and I just put a little picture up there, this is the board of the Kansas Association of Counties. I sit on the board as the Emergency Management Representative for the state of Kansas. So, not only as the Emergency Management Rep, but also a rep from Sling County and the north-central region. So it's a great honor to be able to sit on that board, they're a great, great group of people, very dynamic, and I really enjoy being able to, to be a part of that. Some of our fire activities that we had, we had quite a few different events this, the last couple months, that were pretty significant, and a lot of them have to do with arson investigations. So, our office, as well as the Rural Fire Department, and the Sheriff's Office have been working pretty darn closely together the last couple of months to, to figure out what has happened and how to solve the, solve the crime. We did have a house fire out on Whitmore Road that was reported on the 20th of October. This is actually a fire that, it occurred overnight, and was never reported until the next day. So by the time the fire department got out there, this is what it looked like. So a complete total loss of the structure. Nobody was home, nobody was injured, so that's a very good thing. But this, at this point in time, is not being investigated as an arson, it's still just kind of trying to figure out what, what happened. We did call the State Fire Marshal's Office out to come investigate as well, just to be on the safe side.
Was there any resolution to the arson question?
Nope, not yet, not yet. So, but I would like to show you a couple of pictures. This was November the 15th, it was about, about 4:00 in the morning, and the pager goes off. And as soon as the first fire truck rolls out, or the first firefighter gets on the radio, we definitely need to start noticing, not only the 911 calls, but the fires that the fire department is seeing. There were several fires that were lit in the area of Magnolia and Donmire, as well as portions in Dickinson County. So basically, kind of the eastern part of Sling County. Fire Chief Turner told me that in his 30 years of firefighting, he has never seen grass this tall and this thick. This is basically kind of swamp marshland-type areas, we had several fire trucks that were stuck, we had several firefighters on this, not only just from Sling County, from District Five and District One, but also in Dickinson County. So, we're talking a lot of resources, a lot of manpower, a lot of situations where some of our firefighters could have gotten hurt, a lot of, there was only a couple of houses that were, I don't want to say threatened, but we did evacuate people, just to get them out of the way. So, this is, this is definitely an event that's being investigated as an arson. It is not the only one, it is tied to some other events that we had in the month of October as well. But just trying to express the absolute seriousness of this, it's, it's pretty devastating, and it took a lot of resources at 4:00 in the morning. And not only we're talking 4:00 in the morning, our firefighters were out there until 10:00, 11:00 that, that next day. So, just to kind of show you just a couple more pictures of that, it kind of shows the thickness of that grass out there. And how tall it is, how thick it is, woody species, and it was, it was pretty epic. This is them having to light a backfire, just to control and contain, contain it as best as they possibly could. And obviously, you can tell it's daylight by now. So, those are just a few pictures of that. We do ask if anybody has any information whatsoever on this, please contact the Sheriff's Office, contact my office, contact the Rural Fire District. We're working with the Sheriff's Department in trying to getting this information on Crime Stoppers, because, again, this is not only just Sling County, it's Dickinson County as well. So, we're working with Dickinson County, too. This was an event on October the 14th in Ellsworth County, near, near Canaro. This is Fire District Number Three, they were out there, the landowner beforehand, the night before had lit a campfire, and some embers flared up the next day during some about 25 mile an hour winds, and caught a nice big area on fire up there. This is another area, this is out on Burma Road, this is October the 19th, and this day, we had a red flag warning that was in place, and red flag warning basically just means that the conditions are absolutely horrible for outdoor burning, low humidities, and strong winds, and high temperatures. This started several different spot fires along the, along Burma Road, and took Fire Districts Number Two, Three, Five, Six, and Seven to control this one. This was a very, very dangerous fire, several houses that were threatened in that area. And then this would have been November the 15th outside of Webster Conference Center, Fire District Number Seven got called out there for a nice, for a wood pile that had caught a fire. This was, again, midnight, and they were out there for quite a while, just watching it and making sure that it was staying contained. That's all the pictures that I have for you. So in total, for October, they had 25 calls for service, and then in November, they had 17 calls for service. And just as a little note for my office, any Sling County resident that lives outside the city limits of Salina is required to have a burn permit, if they're going to burn anything, such as trees, or brush, or leaves, or grass, CRP, stubble, whatsoever. Those burn permits expire the calendar year, every year, so they will expire on December 31st. We have opened up the ability for people to obtain their 2016 permit. So they can either go online on the Sling County website, fill out the information and submit it, and we'll get the permit back, email back to you, or they're welcome to come down to our office and we'll issue them a permit. So, just something that we can do to get that process started.
If we renew that right now, do we use the old permit or the new?
You would use the old permit until December 31st. Yeah, our, the 2016 permits will not be valid until January 1st.
Further questions? Public comment?
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. Hannah, I had a couple of questions for you here, one basic one. You are the local expert here for emergency management. I would, I said you're the director, is that correct?
Well, I tell everybody I'm very knowledgeable in a lot of things, but an expert in nothing.
Well, I'm going to call you a director.
Thank you.
Since it was brought up earlier in the meeting, in the video, about an El Nino, is that what that said?
El Nino, yes.
Yeah. It was in a chart. I'm asking the, the question is, what is the definition of an El Nino, and what causes it, and how does it affect us?
Well, Mr. Ruska, I would actually refer you to the National Weather Service, NOAA, they are the experts in that field. They provide us with the information, I have a very basic understanding of it, but really, to answer your question fully, you would probably need to contact them.
Well, can you share with us what you do know?
That it's an event where the surface temperatures in the ocean are warmer, thus creating different weather patterns and weather conditions in the United States.
That's a pretty good answer. I didn't have a clue what it was.
You are an expert, aren't you?
I don't know, I get recognized as a tornado lady all the time.
You are in this, you are in this room, at least, so.
But you can't say, but you can't say why those temperatures change.
I'm sorry?
They don't know why those temperatures change.
It's, yeah.
Let's not get, let's not get into that today. Let's not get into that.
Anyway, thank you, you enlightened me, you know, somewhat on, you know, what it is, and maybe I can do a little more research on it.
The National Weather Service is a fantastic avenue for it, and they'll probably go into a lot more detailed stuff that I couldn't even begin to explain.
But remember, you're the director.
I know where to get the information, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming by today, Hannah.
Thanks.
You bet.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four.
Planning zoning updates with David Neal, Director.
Morning Commissioners. As far as permits are going, we're slowing down now, it's getting into winter time, and people are stopping to build. Overall, our, our three-year average, we typically do about 97 permits a year, we're at 90 right now, we'll catch a couple more in December. I expect we might be a little bit down this year, but still close to that average. This last quarter, we had a lot of, I'm going to call them new homes, some are replacement homes, but new homes built out in the county, having six homes in the quarter, that's quite a bit. Always like to see extra houses built and people moving here. New permits coming in, Land Institute is building a research facility, and Threshing Barn, basically, setting it up so they can thresh their wheat and everything else that they have, and do the scientific research that they do on that. As far as planning activity goes, it's been a pretty normal year... As far as planning activity goes, it's been a pretty normal year for the number of cases we've had. Uh, last night, we had cases for the Planning Commission reviewing a home occupation for a mechanic and a conditional use permit for a dog boarding kennel. Both of those cases were approved. It was a good meeting, a lot of good discussion, making sure that the business owners are well represented, and we wanna make sure these things happen, and making sure the neighbors are protected at the same time. Uh, for the violations going on, there's a new one. I haven't put it on this list yet because I haven't written the violation. I'm trying to get ahold of the guy. There is a private wind generator out on Holmes Road, south of Magnolia, actually, south of Shilling area. The wind generator is creating a lot of noise, and I've got a few neighbors complaining about that. I believe Commissioner Guile has, uh, did you go out and talk to one of them, I believe?
I did. I did make contact with, uh, the guy that has the generator, though.
And that's, right now, that's what I'm working on. I've always found with any complaints, I prefer to talk to the person, and you talk to them and they, once they know what the problem is, they'll usually take care of it. So I'm working on getting ahold of the, uh, property owner there. If I can't get ahold of them this week, I'll end up having to write the violation, and then they usually get ahold of me pretty quick. And we'll see what we can do to, uh, get that generator so it's not creating so much noise for the neighbors. For the environmental health part, things are slowing down there, too. It, as the ground gets colder, we, uh, don't tend to dig as many wells and septic systems. Um, we are starting, I have a very rough draft. We had talked about the real estate inspection process. I have a very rough draft of that process, so I have to go over that. And, uh, it's not something I'm ready to present to the commission. Like I said, it's very rough. Um, for care grant activities, we've gone past our hundred healthy home inspections that we do, so we've met that part of the grant. And because it is a good opportunity to educate homeowners on basic home care and maintenance, we're gonna keep doing that as much as we can to help people. We still have radon kits, so anybody out there that needs a radon kit to test their house in Salina, stop by my office, room two seventeen. You fill out a form, we give you a kit and, uh, have you tested for radon real quick. We've had, for the radon mitigations, we've had seventeen homes apply for mitigation. We have twelve of those homes with systems already installed, and the rest of them, they're working on. We're also going to, uh, work with K-State to test, Salina had passed a radon prevention plan where new homes constructed in the city of Salina are required to install a passive system, which is basically venting out of the basement with no exhaust fan or anything like that. We're going to, uh, work with K-State to test a few of those homes to see if that measure is actually working like it should. So Salina will get to find out if that code works like they want it to or not. Uh, last little part, some of the projects. The, we're working on a new floodplain map. The current step right now, the engineer that's developing the map has given us a list of all the previous letter of map changes. That's the LOMAs or the LOMARS where people have added fill and removed from the floodplain. I'm going through all these and making sure that they're correct, making sure that we have them all documented, so that the property owners, if you have one, I don't want yours to be eliminated because we missed it somewhere. It's much easier to throw it out right now and say, you missed this one, get it fixed. The other part, last month, we went out to a, uh, planning conference in Kansas. It was a, it was a good four-state conference, Missouri, um, Oklahoma and Arkansas were there with Kansas. Learned a lot about rural agricultural protections. Oklahoma has a lot of similar problems to Kansas as far as the city is overstepping agriculture and trying to protect that agricultural interest. And then part of it, um, I'll set up a time with you later when we can talk about it. Because of new Supreme Court rulings this year, we have to work on our sign code a little bit. They wanna look at a content-neutral sign code, and I'll explain the details. It might take a little bit more time than we have today. And that is all I have for you, unless you have any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Any public comment?
Ray Ruska, two thirty-five North Santa Fe. Um, you brought up, uh, earlier in your update about a dog kennel approved CUP. Uh, since there's been a little controversy about that in the past, uh, what, what was that all about?
It was a, uh, boarding kennel north of town. The person that operates the kennel, they started as a pet grooming business. They had expanded into taking care of pets. Um, consider it dog daycare. When you go out for the weekend, when you go out on vacation for a week, she boards your animals. Unfortunately, she didn't realize she needed a conditional use permit. It was pointed out to us, so we brought her in and had her apply for a use permit.
Was there a charge for that use permit to do that procedure?
Yes, we charged two hundred dollars for a conditional use permit. That typically pays for the advertising required for any zoning action.
And what was the name of the business?
Um, Pretty Pets Canine Camp.
Excuse me?
Pretty Pets Canine Camp.
So they're approved and they're ready to go and no problems?
Correct.
That's great. Thank you.
Further public comment?
Norman Mantle, Salina. Just kind of a comment. These city people, all they do is complain about us people in the agricultural area. I can't even farm at night now because, oh, my lights are coming in my window. So I would ask the commission to take all these complaints with a grain of salt, because they are practical use. And if it's a little bit inconvenient for some people, that's too bad, because we gotta make a living.
Uh, thank you.
For the Commissioners, we do, for every permit that comes through my office, I require everybody to sign an agricultural use notice exactly for that reason. It, it is a farm community. I want people to realize that farms can create noise, they operate at all hours. There are some, uh, as a city person, some things you may not like if you're moving out there, and I want people to be very well aware of that, and that the county is not going to take any action against the agricultural community on that.
So we don't have any kind of, um, um, what do I wanna say, curfew on?
No.
Noise or, or, okay, that's what I thought, that's.
And I just want people to be aware of.
I, I agree.
Is that wind generator on a farm or is it on a person's lot?
It's on a person's property. It would be large enough. If he wanted to pasture animals, he could. But the wind generator is for private use to the house. It's not part of an agricultural operation. The problem there is that there are way too many houses in that area. It's not a typical even eighty-acre farm.
Is it eighty acres?
Well, I'd better than that.
I believe it's more. I'd have to go look at the numbers.
I'd say it's, I'd say it's a farm.
I believe it is.
Might have to look into that pretty closely.
When you look at Holmes Road, it's that area with all the houses lining Holmes Road, and this is just behind that, so it's.
Did he have the farm before they moved there? That'd be another question, I guess I'd have.
Well, I'd always say the farms are there first, but I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got a comment along those, Tom Rixtrew, uh, forty-five hundred West Shilling. Along those same lines, the, the lady was complaining last night about she lived in a deal out here in his private property, and she was complaining that trucks come out there and all and on. And I wanted to say it, but it wasn't my place to say it, but people want that kinda protection. They've got gated communities for these folks to live in. They don't want noise, don't want shines, and they don't want somebody's garage up, and they don't want the door. And that's where they need to be instead of worrying with the rest of the people trying to change the whole world. And I just wanted to make that thing, that, that there is places for these people, and we won't bother them, we won't shine their lights in their, in their eyes, and we won't drive our trucks across their, their lawn or whatever. If we got, if they got a gated community, I don't wanna go into things, but, uh, there is places for those. Leave the rest of us alone. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you. David, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Moving on to item number five.
Approval of County Commission minutes for December one, twenty fifteen.
Mr. Chair, I move we accept the County Commission minutes of December first, twenty fifteen, as presented.
I'll second.
So motion to second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any other business that needs to come before the commission at this time? Under announcements, uh, the commission is going to go out to eat at Martinelli's at twelve-thirty with county staff. I believe we are reconvening at two o'clock upstairs, uh, for meeting number four, actually. Uh, are there any other announcements?
I'd like to read one. Jedidiah Morris. To the kindly influence of Christianity, we owe that degree of civil liber- uh, civil freedom and political, social happiness which mankind now enjoys. Whenever the pillars of Christianity shall be overthrown, our present republican forms of government and all blessings which flow from them must fall with them.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.